Two twenty twenty. Uh, Dave and I have, uh, Dave is their new council president and I've been doing a lot of work in. We've had several chances to talk. And Dave wanted to start out this work session with just some updates on what we've been working on the last couple of weeks. And so we started out with the mayor's comments. I just want to let everybody know that we're doing the RFP for solid waste. And, uh, that has been going up in the paper for the next two weeks. Uh, we should be getting proposals. They are due by April third. Another thing is resort tax. There's gonna be a resort tax committee meeting on February third.
Monday here.
February fall. What time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. At that time, they'll be discussing, uh, what to put in the resolution. And we'll be moving that forward. So if you're interested in that, please attend those meetings and give your public input. You know, give Tom just, uh, just a short time here to say whatever he wants.
Oh, that, wait, that's really dangerous.
And I can spend a couple of minutes and I got a timer going.
You know, so, so just quickly, um, we obviously had the public meeting on the resort tax, uh, earlier in January and it was very well attended. Um, and so our, our plan is we haven't had a resort tax committee meeting since then, so we're gonna have one next Monday. Um, if we would like to, well, I maybe I should say it this way. Our hope is, is to be able to get enough information to the council so potentially it could end up on the ballot in June. In order to do that, we have to get information to the council for the meeting in February. And then the council would have to set the second meeting in February to have an actual action item to take action on the, the resort tax. Uh, and then that would get us in time for the timeline, which I believe it's May ninth in order for the submission. Uh, if, if that was too fast for the council, we would just have to move the, the date into, you know, either the, the general election or into next year. The advantage for, for doing it earlier is that it allows us to make some of the adjustments that people have been asking for in the next budget year. So, um, so that, that would, that would be our hope if, if everything works out. And I'll just give in the, the two second comment is our, the general theories that we've heard. One is, uh, generally people are supportive of the resort tax. Second thing is, is generally they want to see the resort tax. They wanna see where that resort tax money is, uh, being spent. And they're definitely in favor of the resort tax money being spent on capital improvements. But they also believe that some of it should go to the operations of some of those capital improvements. There's things they think it shouldn't be spent on, spent on, like marketing and general city hall operations, general city operations. They think it shouldn't be. So our, our goal at the next meeting is gonna be to try and build that picture and come up with something that we can recommend to the council and hopefully the council will, uh, be able then to see if that looks good. And if so, bring that forward to the voters. I hope that wasn't too much time.
That was perfect, Tom. Thank you. So once again, that's Monday, uh, the resort tax meeting. Dave?
Um, yeah, I just, as, as the mayor mentioned, he's, he sent a, a bunch of meeting requests to me. I kinda got my, my inbox bombarded. Um, I was able to attend some of those. Some of them I attended just by circumstance. I happened to be down here when the meetings were happening. Um, but at the same time, um, I did not want to, to speak for the council or represent the council in any way, shape or form. And I wanted to make sure to share with you guys, um, what we saw at those meetings. Um, one of them is we had a vendor meeting that came in, a vendor who's looking at doing a, a food stand and some music. Um, it's really a staff conversation. Um, he is, is in, in conversation with James. There is a possibility that he may come to the next meeting and speak in the public comments section. Um, if they're not able to find something, just to, basically his ask would require new mechanisms that don't exist within the city right now. So at this point, it was a staff conversation and that is where it's taking place. Then the kind of the second thing is, is that I wanna pay just a moment to, um, and I appreciate everybody else's patience. This is a great crowd. Um, as the mayor and I sat down and kinda talked about what we wanted for the year, um, one of the goals that we both agreed on, that we'd really like to have is a year of really dull, boring meetings. And what I mean by that is that we've gotten ahead of everything. Um, and we've had opportunities to talk and, and to discuss it a couple of times. I appreciate Tom coming in tonight 'cause the, the resort tax is coming in hot and fast. And I had concerns that if it was gonna show up at the next meeting and say, here it is now vote, um, that there was gonna be resistance. And so we're just trying to get, make sure that there's enough information that's out. From a council standpoint, what that means is if we have questions, if we can give staff heads up in advance, um, if we can go through and, and kind of do a couple of rounds in the background so that, and, and, and just basically not save things to the last minute. There will be things that there's disagreements on and that's cool. Um, but if we do our job correctly, in my opinion, we ought to be able to have most of the, the fireworks addressed prior to, to getting to these meetings. And so that'll be a sign that, that we've done our job well and we've worked well with the city and coordinated. Um, if we can keep things dull and boring. I will, I will do, do my part to do that. And, uh, as far as the meetings that the mayor sends out, I may not be able to attend all of those. And so some of those I may just forward on and anybody from the council who wants to go, um, in that stead is fine. The only ask is that if somebody's going as a representative of the council, that they come back to these meetings ready to share the information that they wanted at those meetings.
Thank you, Dave. We'll move on to item number three, which is the pool update. Brent Morris here from Interstate Engineering and he'll be doing the presentation.
Before I get started, I'm gonna call Brian Milney, who's our pool designer, who's been involved in the project from the beginning. He's really just gonna listen to the conversation. If there are any technical questions that come up that neither Kate nor I can answer, he's gonna be able to answer them. So I'm just gonna call him real quick. He's down in Florida at the moment.
Hello, this is Brian.
Oh, no, he didn't answer. If there are, if there are questions that come, I'll call him. So, um, first, thanks for the opportunity, council members, mayor, to be here, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to present, um, to the public that's come, uh, to ask any questions. Um, real quick, team introductions. My name is Brent Moore. I'm the regional vice president for Interstate Engineering. Uh, as I mentioned, Brian Milney is our lead pool designer. In Florida, there he is, uh, with Jim a couple of years ago. We started this study process in the mechanical room at the pool. And he's done well over a dozen pools, mostly throughout Montana, uh, North Dakota, the, this northern region. Uh, he's really a pool expert throughout this region. And then Kayden Bedwell's here. He's in our Sheridan, Wyoming office and he's also our, our pool designer for the firm, mentoring with Brian and, and doing a lot of work on this specific pool. Um, we're also currently working on a pool in Sheridan, Wyoming, or, or Kayden's office. It's similar to, similar to our pool here, Mattel Pool. Uh, on our team also, at this point in time, has also been Red Lodge surveying. They've done the base mapping for the pool project, which allows us to move forward into design. So it really is a pretty local team. A little bit of that project history, the pool was constructed in nineteen eighty-three, so these are the as-built plans from back then. So a little bit over thirty-six years old, uh, which really is beyond the average lifespan of a pool of this kind. They're thirty to forty years. Forty years would be really the extent of a pool that was constructed with these construction methods back in nineteen eighty-three. Recognizing that the pool was aging and, uh, public works staff, city staff were having a challenging time, continuing to Band-Aid, uh, the pool, there was planning that began in twenty seventeen and probably before that to seriously consider what we, as a community, can do to replace or rehab or build a new pool. So there was a feasibility stun, start, study started in twenty seventeen and Interstate did work on that. Uh, the main alternatives that were considered at that time were to replace an existing location, to build in a new location, or to build an indoor pool. And there were some minor variations on those themes within that study, but those are the main ideas of that study. Ultimately, there was a decision made in, in early twenty eighteen to move forward to replace the pool in that existing location. That was the general consensus at the time. There was a, a number of information, public involvement meetings. There were informational meetings, stakeholder interviews of the main pool users, community members. There was a survey, uh, and we had around, I think, two hundred thirteen responses to that survey. Um, there was a pub, several public presentations. The survey also went to the schools, so we had quite a few responses from school-aged kids. And ultimately, this, at that time, was a decision to move forward with what's called a base pool, which is basically removal of the existing pool tank, uh, waiting pool, concrete decks, pipings, uh, putting in a new pool, which would be a little bit of a different orientation on the site, uh, replacing all of the, the sand filter system, a new pool heater, adding more capacity in terms of heating the pool so that the pool could, uh, extend its season a bit, and new, new chemical feed system. And so these are all the maintenance issues that, uh, public works staff within the city are responsible for, for keeping the pool going and, and also pool staff. Also considering removing, remodeling the existing bath house, primarily looking at a family changing room. So this was the study and this was a preferred alternative. I'll point out just a couple of things at this point here if I can. Um, so this where the existing pool is aerial. The idea was to do an L-shaped pool rather than having a separate pool and a separate waiting pool. Some of the other concepts that were considered at the time is additional items would be a splash pad, which are really popular with kids these days, uh, and also a slide with a, a flume down it. Um, and then a deck slide over here. So these are some additional items that could, uh, occur on the pool site for additional costs. So that was twenty eighteen. Uh, it wasn't until the summer twenty nineteen that the city decided to close the pool. This just shows some of the deck of the pool and the cracking on the deck. Um, and really the city made a decision that it was just, uh, challenging to continue to operate the pool as a Band-Aid approach. At that time, um, the city did allocate funding to complete this portion of the project, which is a thirty percent design and evaluate funding options. So in terms of the base pool renovations, uh, what, what we're currently looking at and working with staff over the last several months, uh, through thirty percent design, is this looks, this is just an image of a, of a similar L-shaped pool. Uh, it's with a zero entry feature. And so, um, generally kids could go right into that pool. It's, comes right up to the, to the ground level. It's also very good for accessibility. Uh, the other thing that we'll do with this renovation is to expand the fenced area, fenced area and make it bigger so that inside of the pool area, there's actually quite a bit of room that's underutilized around the pool right now. And I'll show a little bit more about that in the next couple of slides. So in terms of the base pool renovations, the plan is for a new concrete painted pool with stainless gutters. Um, the idea is that the current, uh, concrete has been spalling, so basically falling apart off the walls. And so to line it with fiberglass or even PVC, uh, you still have some potential structural issues in the base of the pool that's there today. And so, uh, those might be temp, more temporary solutions that might not last for as long as you want them to last because of the structure of the pool is, is basically falling apart. There's also underneath the pool, uh, there's a lot of water loss that, that, uh, that we don't know exactly where that's coming from in the piping mechanisms. And so we won't be able to fix those pipes which go under the pool unless we basically tear up the whole thing and replace it with new pool. So you're getting again a forty, thirty to forty year, if the city moves forward, a thirty to forty year lifespan out of a brand-new pool in the exact same location. So, uh, the concrete is durable and it's designed also for cold climates. You can have with fiberglass pools particularly, issues in cold climates where, um, you don't like the concrete as much. So again, uh, Jim, I'm sure could talk about the challenge of maintaining the equipment which is in the pool that makes the pool safe and complies with state law. Uh, but basically all of the equipment needs to be replaced. In addition to the new pool heater, uh, it will be solar-ready, so if the, the community decides at a later stage to add solar as a part of the heating for the pool, that's an option for, uh, the city or the public, the community would consider at a later date. And as I mentioned, there are some additional items that aren't a part of the, the base pool, uh, fixing the base pool. And those would be a splash pad. Uh, there's an example of a splash pad. I think that one's in Lewis Town up there. Um, and then there's a, just a deck slide, which would be right kind of next to where the current diving board is. Or these are some bigger, um, tower water slides which are in Lewis Town. So we're thinking one potential tower with water slide. For those with parents and kids here, things are coming, but, um, I've got a five and eight-year-old and they love, this is what they're really into now. These kind of slides wherever we go to. They're kinda growing out of this and into that. But they all, they all like them in stages, so. This is probably not showing up terribly well, but this is the thirty percent site plan set. And I'll just point out a few things. Again, you've got the pool, which is roughly the same size. It's a twenty-five year meter pool, eighty-two feet roughly in length. So it's roughly the same size as it is today. And then adding a larger, that L-shaped zero entry feature there. Um, you just can't, wha- what we'll also do is, uh, the fence, as you know, kind of is relatively close to the pool deck, um, on both the west side and the south side of the pool. And so that'll be pushed out further to kind of along the edge of the building on the west. And then quite a ways to the south, there are some, um, trees on this, in this area that'll have to be removed, um, partially because they create some maintenance issues, uh, because when the trees shed their leaves, they get into the, the, the pool equipment and that just is, is not good. So, um, the, the deck, the pool deck itself will be widened to the north. And then there'll be, uh, uh, retaining wall right along the sidewalk on the north. They'll also be widened to the east. And again, a retaining wall. Right now, if you go to the pool, the fence, there's a fence and then there's, um, kind of just a landscaped area. And of course, the public's work staff maintains that area. And by extending the, the deck of the pool, one, we get more room for people to reprey on that deck, but also limit the amount of maintenance that public works staff has to do on that grass, which really is underutilized adjacent to the pool. So it, it makes the pool footprint quite considerably bigger. In addition, in the area over by where the existing kiddie pool is, but this new zero, zero entry feature would be, uh, we add some either lawn or turf area so that people could put down, um, towels and, and hang out off of the cement deck if they wanted to as well. So there really is quite a bit of room on the site. Go ahead.
Can you speak a little bit to the zero entry and the L-shaped versus the two separate pools? What are the pros and cons of those?
Um, well, I'm not the pool designer and Kayden may correct me if, um, I missed something and we can call Brian on that too at a later date. But, um, you, the, the, the system is all, uh, managed by the one mechanical system and the neck. So there's an advantage there that you don't have to have that separated piping which goes to a separate pool area. Kayden, do you have a?
Yeah, separated filter, heater, pumps, um, and then you also have it, um, accessible use. So we'll have a stainless steel fence right at the two foot and then there'll be a gate on it and it'll, it'll gradually go into the regular pool. So if there's somebody that's mobility challenged, they can go through the zero and go through that gate and get in and you don't have to have a, uh, like that actual lip that would lift them down into it.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be the best use of the available space?
And we did make it a lot bigger than the waiting pool that's there right now.
Yeah, we, we adjusted the location of the pool footprint on the site to, a little bit to the, um, south and east. Kind of generally it's, it's moved from there to the south and the east, uh, which opens up some space between the, the, the pool and the bath house as well as some area on that north side of the pool which is the deck.
Are there any concerns from a contaminant basis when you introduce the kiddie pool and tie it to the main pool?
It seems to be standard practice. Now certainly, I mean, you do have, that, that can happen in pools for sure.
Oh, what kind of contaminant would you be talking about? The kind that changes the dye?
But, you know, again, that this system is, is, is an improved treatment system and so, um, you know, fixing that.
That is one benefit to the splash deck too, if you don't have it standing water, it can be easily cleaned.
Yeah. When I go for, forward and then I'll come back and answer any other additional questions to council. Uh, so I'm gonna go, that was on the design side. I'm gonna go just very briefly into funding. Um, there are really a couple of funding options for the pool or a variety of funding options for the pool. Uh, the, really the most straightforward one is the resort tax. Uh, right now, the resort tax is allocating, uh, money to this design effort for the pool, both from last year's fiscal year as well as this fiscal year. And so there is money being spent out of resort tax. Uh, the council certainly can allocate around a hundred and ten, a hundred and forty thousand dollars per year in capital costs out of resort tax moving forward, uh, for fifteen or twenty years, depending on whether or not the city puts in a revenue bond or a loan. So that's a relatively straightforward option. And I gave a range here and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of minutes. The other main opportunity or option that, um, the city has to fund the pool would be a recreation district or a special improvement district. There's been some discussion about this. If the recreation district was limited to citywide, the estimated cost would be roughly sixty-eight dollars per lot, per month. It'd be on a per lot basis for city residences, which equates seventy-two to eighty-four per year. That's just the range again of what the cost would be if a SID or rec district were created. There has been discussion at the parks district level and council level about a larger district, which would go beyond the city limits, given that, um, the pool is likely used by people that don't just live in the city. Uh, but that requires an election, a little bit more, uh, time to establish and, in the process. So the bond or the loan could start in the resort tax. One option is you could also fund it out of resort tax and then transfer it at a later date to, to a district after the creation of a district or a special improvement district. And also just wanna stress the importance of not only in this pool, but in other pools that we worked on and, and fundraising. And so acknowledge that there are efforts within this community and have been efforts to raise funds. Uh, and so there are really three, uh, discussions that I've been involved in. One, the community foundation initially looked at an endowment, um, for the pool and there's still discussions about that. Uh, particularly now, uh, there's a discussion about the endowment for operation and maintenance. So there'll be an annual oper, there'll be an annual capital cost for this pool for fifteen to twenty years. But obviously every year, there's also operations and maintenance costs as well. We don't anticipate the operations and maintenance as being substantially higher in this pool than it was in the past pool. Um, the only real addition is the heating element, which could cause some additional costs. But, um, the city was paying for operation and maintenance in the past and it's a pretty similar pool that we're looking at, uh, currently. Certainly the Friends of the Red Lodge Pool, some of you may have attended the New Year's Eve event and certainly thank you if you did that, um, has raised some funds. And the decision to be made still moving forward between now and a hundred percent design and when we, uh, let a contract for bid would be whether or not, um, some of these funds that are raised are used for operations and maintenance or are they used to, um, basically reduce the loan that the city will take out for the base pool, to fix the base pool? Or are there, uh, additional items that, that, that might be funded by the community if the city moves forward with the base pool? So the next steps on the project really is, we're at thirty percent design and we're, we're hoping to move forward to a hundred percent design. Um, again, additional fundraising is really critical, uh, and the community can do that. Uh, establish an SID, a special improvement district or a rec district if the council decides that is the funding mechanism that, for the base pool. Uh, and we can move forward with a hundred percent design complete by June of this year, which would allow us for advertise, advertise for bids in June of twenty twenty. It'll allow the council to consider the funding alternatives within their budgeting, annual budgeting process. It'll allow the city to award bids in July of twenty twenty when the new fiscal year begins for the city. And at that point in time, there'd be a loan or bond commitment in July of twenty twenty. So that's when, uh, the larger, uh, number would have to be obligated. Construction then under the schedule would, uh, occur in July through October of this year. Uh, fundraising again could continue during that time period and it could continue all of twenty twenty and into twenty twenty-one, where we'd hopefully have a grand opening and we'd all be able to celebrate, uh, community success. So keys to successful project, what we found is any project that we worked on, but also specifically pool projects, is you really do have to have commitment from all parties. Um, commitment from the city is the main party in this project. Organization, so moving forward, uh, continue to be organized, uh, have a team approach between the public, the city, staff, design team, and communication so that people know what's happening. And so what you can accomplish when you have all of these keys to a successful project is a natural new pool for your community. And again, this is Lewis Town. It's certainly one of our flagship pools that we designed. Um, and it really is, is an example of a community that came together to do, do a variety of things. I'm gonna just go back a couple of quick slides, um, to establish their pool. And what they did in, um, but you can't read all of this, but this is one of the brochures that we worked on for Livingston or Lewis Town. But it shows that, um, they use a combination of recreational districts, so the city established a district and then for some of the additional items, the slides, the splash park, the community did fundraising for those additional items which supported the overall pool facility. Well, and, uh, very briefly with just saying, you know, every successful project also takes the support of the community. So thank you to the community for coming. Uh, and there have been a lot of folks that have been involved in, in this project in the past and moving forward. In terms of the design team, the next step that we have to do in addition to having Red Lodge surveying Interstate Engineering on this team would be a, a geotechnical survey and, um, G. Greenrock Engineering, who has local staff here, would, would be a partner in that as well, doing that geotechnical work, um, to move forward with the design of the decks particularly. But thanks for those of you that have been involved and I'm happy to answer any more questions.
And I do wanna say that we have a hundred and forty thousand million, uh, from the resort tax to complete the engineering part. So at this point, right now, we're talking about funding.
Could you just name the price tag on the pool?
Yeah, right now with, um, all, all from start to finish, um, it's about one point six. And so there have been a couple of change, one point six million dollars. Judith, I know that you were looking at the study numbers. I'll pull that up real quick, the cost estimate. Um, so there's a cost estimate, uh, which is, is one point six million dollars. And that's after thirty percent design. Some of the design changes that were made from the conceptual report, the feasibility study, particularly is, is increasing the deck size. Um, that's the main thing, but also that, that those numbers were put together two years ago as well. And so there's an inflation factor, uh, between two years ago and the feasibility study and now. We're still though in, in, you know, in a similar range. Uh, as we go, if we move forward into the one hundred percent design, we'll really work through all of these project costs and make sure that the city does in fact want to move forward on all the elements. Or there may be some additional elements between now and a hundred percent design in June that might be added by the city. The other thing that happens in the process is, is this is an engineer's estimate. We do a final engineer's estimate when we go to, to bid for the project in June. And then, uh, the actual costs are, come back from the contractors who, who respond to that bid. And we select the lowest bid with, that's responsible and responsive to that bid, um, generally speaking. And so we really won't know the costs until July when, uh, under this schedule, we discussed night, July, when those bids would be opened by the city. And then the city at that point in time could make a decision to award the bids or not award the bids, uh, based upon the responses. Uh, and based upon the discussions regarding funding between now and then and potentially some fundraising.
Was Lewis Town's pool about the same size or much bigger?
It's bigger.
I don't, uh, how much did that cost? Do you have any idea?
You know, I think it's around four. I don't, I forget. I, you know, I don't know that to answer that question, but it was, it was more expensive.
I recall it was about once, one point seven.
Yeah, I can, if you go back, it's considerably more expensive with all the additional items.
And while we're having the multitask, that one point six is new money, it's not counting that which has already been spent on design thus far?
Yeah, two point four. Uh, it's roughly two point four million is what, what the brochure had at that time. And I think they may have added some elements even after that brochure was completed, so.
How long ago was it done?
Twenty fourteen it was completed.
So it's five years ago.
Yeah.
And a lot of that pool was existing. The whole majority of structure of the pool was already done.
Can I, uh, can I ask you that, what exactly are splash deck features? That's listed at two hundred and thirty-five thousand, pretty.
Yeah, and that's, that's not part of the base pool. Um, so we've not designed a splash deck here right now, but, uh, have you ever been to a splash deck? Sorry, that's the easiest way to describe. Have you been to one? Okay. So, um, yeah, it's, it's an area that has water shooting out of things and they've got water guns and like cool things that tip over and pour water on kids and they can run through those breakers. It's very interactive for ages two to six generally.
And the base is something other than concrete, so you're not hurting the water?
You know, the base is still concrete. So concrete, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's keep this man involved here. Okay, so let's keep this man and Bill here. Let's take questions from the table here, the council. Mary, you had one, and then we'll move it to the public.
Do any of the assessments that you've done include any improvements to the bathhouse? Bathhouse or any accessibility issues?
Yeah, so I'll show you the sheet for the bathhouse. I'll pull that up and you might not be able to see it on the screen all that well. So the answer is I'm going to the sheet on this, the main renovations within the bathhouse. So this is the existing bathhouse. And so you come in and there are bathrooms on both sides. And this is on the north side of the building is where all of the mechanical equipment is. I showed a picture with Brian and Jim earlier in the presentation on that. And so this is a zoomed-in area of that area on the north. And the primary addition would be a family changing room. And so that I could go in with the daughter, if I had one, or my wife could go in with the son, which she does have, and change with their kids. And a lot of the mechanical equipment is being moved outside of that building, on the north side with a new fence. The idea being that there's, in that existing bathhouse, there's inadequate storage for pool staff and homework staff. So that frees up some storage. There's still discussion with staff about the location of that family changing rooms. Currently, it is on the left side of the building. The primary couple of options, it is better circulation within that side of the building to have it there. But also, if the community or city were to choose to do a splash deck at some point in time, the splash deck could actually open longer hours potentially than the main pool because of the lifeguard staff and the lack of needs for lifeguard staff. So it would allow for a public restroom to that splash pad, which would be external to the fence area in the future, if that was added. So that's kind of the reason why that's there now. But the idea right now, in the discussion with the city staff about the bathhouse itself, will be compliant with state law in terms of the number of fixture counts for our pool. So it doesn't require an update or a renovation. And so the idea is to finish the base pool, which includes minor renovations to this portion of the building in this phase, and then sometime down the road, if the city or public chooses to renovate the bathhouse itself, that would be a separate project later that road.
Okay, but this family?
Changing room.
Is included?
Is included in this, in the base pool, yes.
And it's been assessed for accessibility for people with mobility?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
We're going to keep it up the table here. And just a minute, I'll get to you, Bill. We're going to keep it up at the table first here, Bill, and then I'll move it on to you guys. Hold your question. Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure I understood one of your funding proposals correctly. I think the first one was tied to the resort tax. Allocate a certain percentage of the resort tax and then use that for leverage to get financing?
Yeah.
To get a bond?
Correct, yeah.
Has?
Just to declare, you cannot get a bond from it. So.
That's not accurate. We've done additional research since you guys discussed that. So we've talked to the city's bond council.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in state law, so.
That's a tax exempt bond.
I don't know if it's a tax exempt bond, Judith. I'm not sure what kind of bond it is, but you could do a revenue bond out of the resort tax and pledge revenue from the resort tax to a revenue bond. The other option, though, is an intercap loan, would be the other primary option. The main benefit of a bond over a loan is a bond can be extended for twenty years and you can hopefully get better rates. Intercap loan is a common state funding mechanism as well, where you get a loan through the state. And the rates there right now are three-point-three-seven, so they're also very good rates through the intercap loan program. They readjust in mid-February, so it could go down, they could go up. But yeah, you got the basic idea of using the resort tax to leverage the loan.
If it went the SID route, is there a benefit to the interest rate, one way or the other?
No, it still would be a revenue. It'd still be a revenue bond, it'd still be pledging the revenue received from the additional district to the bond.
I just want to say thank you, Brent. You obviously put a lot of personal effort into this. I know it's your community too, as well as ours. And I appreciate it very much.
Any other comments from the table? Open that up to the public. We're going to ask you to step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Give us your name and your address.
Oh, okay.
Bill, you're up.
Well, I was a part of a conversation last night about the previous pool and when it was built. And there, I was told, and there was a couple of people that were there when it was built, that when it was originally built, there was a concern about a body of water that was flowing underneath it. And they were assured by the people that were constructing it that that wouldn't be a problem. And from what I was told, apparently that there was a problem and it continued and has continued up to now. So I guess what I'm wondering is, is that body of water going to continue to be a problem? And will there be maintenance problems involved with that?
Yeah, well, generally, we have water flowing under all of our town. We just have high groundwater generally everywhere. In terms of the pool location, I've heard that as well. The next step is to have a geotechnical analysis. They go out and we have four bore hole locations, they'll bore down. And they'll tell us the results of that boring in terms of where the water level is and what kind of rock we have going down. So that we'll be able to design a solution to whatever conditions there are there within the ground. And so I don't know that a geotechnical was done in nineteen-eighty. It may not have been, but certainly we will have to look at that issue and recognize that it is one that needs to be designed too, it's a design parameter.
Thank you.
Comments from the public? Judith?
I'm just very concerned that the city's budget is already pretty strained. And you don't have the maintenance costs for the pool in right now. So if we build a pool, you've got to find like sixty thousand dollars a year in your budget to support the maintenance of the pool. So I think it's going to be imperative to get a pool district, or whatever you want to call it. Can you please tell us what are the steps, what has been, there was a movement to try to get one. It didn't go very far. So what would be the steps to get a pool district? How long would it take?
Really, James, you want to go ahead and answer that?
I can speak to that. Parks Board looked at doing a Parks District that would encompass the high school district. The high school district goes from Luther to just about Bear Creek to about Fox. And the process for doing that is getting the city council on board with that, getting the county commissioners on board for that. That would be go-to a valid. If it was just in the city limits, the city council can do that by resolution. They can authorize any kind of district, whether it's a street district, a park district, a small modern district, by resolution. The benefits of doing the high school district, and the main reason why we wanted to incorporate the high school district, even though it is harder to pass, is that we think there's, we know that there's a lot of people outside of city limits using the pool. A lot of the students here, especially at the high school level, are, live outside the city limits. And the cost per dwelling unit would be a little more than double if it was in the city limits as opposed to the high school district. The thoughts we heard from the city council was that we need to get the resort tax passed before we really discuss a park district or thinking about any other revenue sources. So the first step is really to get resort tax taken care of.
So then it would be a proposal from the council to the county? Does the county have to approve it?
As long as the council passes the resolution, takes all the necessary steps, I do believe that the county would have to allow it to go to a vote.
So Judith, I guess I'll just add a few things. There are really three options. The first option is a citywide rec district, and James has described that. The second is the larger district, which would spread the cost to users that likely use the pool, so probably more equitable. And the third is just a special improvement district, which can be used for anything. Like the most recent special improvement district, of course, is up at the golf course for streets. And so that's pretty also straightforward to establish. It could be done within a timeframe.
Is that within the city or is that?
That would just be citywide again.
So there's two citywide and one?
Two citywide and one broad. Yeah, and again, you know, as I mentioned, and I'll state this again, because I think this is really important. Financing at a city level changes over time. And so the city could obligate debt from the resort tax in year one and two. And maybe three, year three is when that broad or resort tech or recreation district might be established, maybe. Just theoretically. And then that money potentially could be a part of that rec district when it's established, that obligation. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be a fifteen-year, twenty-year loan out of the resort tax, so.
I'll just make one comment in terms of the resort tax and resort tax survey. I think most people know this, that when we did the resort tax survey, streets and sidewalks was the highest rated, but pools was very close up there. So that, you know, and what we've heard in our, in the information that we got is the pool, you know, having a pool is very important. More to come on that when we present it.
Did we get a copy of your recent?
How's that?
What you just had up there?
Yeah, I think James plans to post those on the website, yeah.
We'll get those on the public work page of the city's website, the whole presentation.
Yes. My name's Todd Gallagher. We live west of town. I was born and raised here. And we moved back from Denver last summer. Well, I taught at the school last year and then we've got my daughters in secondary and some in preschool. So growing up, my brother and I and our friends, we spent countless hours at the pool. So when I think about my kids now, having the opportunity to be able to continue to do that in a real small town, and be able to go there with their friends and hang out and play all the time. My mom taught for twenty-seven years, so we ended up hanging out at the pool while she was across the street at the elementary, getting her classroom ready. But that's something that's really important to me. And we talked about the different districts. When we were down in Colorado, one thing that we had was we had a local pool that was, had a pool portion, had a couple of water slides, had a splash area. But I know one thing that they did, there were three or four different rate tiers. So you were, if you were a Golden resident, you paid X amount. If you were Jefferson County, which was the county that Golden was in, you paid a different route, or a different rate. And then if you were out of the county, that was a higher rate. So I would assume that when you're talking about the different SID districts or whatever it is from a funding perspective, I would assume that was something that they were, that they were doing. Local residents probably paid more in taxes, they got the best rate whenever they went to the pool. County, maybe they covered some of that as well. But if you were, lived outside of the city, that was something that you had to pay more whenever you went. So if you were looking at the ability to form something quickly and then potentially expand it in a couple of years, that could be something that possibly could be left out from a funding perspective. And we live out of town, but why would they pay more for kids if we didn't have to pay taxes or anything like that for them to be able to come in? Use the pool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Bring it back to the table. Anything else from the table?
So what do you anticipate? I heard a little bit of the timeline shooting for a June or July out to bid. What is anticipated as far as what discussions do we need to have? What's the timeline look like? And what actions are we asking from the council to get us there?
Well, we're going to go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, the next step again, really the first is to move forward with one-hundred percent design. So that's in agreement with Interstate, move forward with one-hundred percent design. And then additional discussion at the council table about funding as you go through your annual budgeting process so to make a decision on how you're going to fund the pool. So that when we get to July and you're ready to award a contract, you've already made a decision in your budgeting process on how you're funding the pool. And you're able to award the contract and go on. There, have to work with the bond councils. And the plan is already, let them know that the city's working on that. And that's the main thing in terms of another outside of maybe a bond council. And back to one of your questions, I think you were starting to ask, that the full cost estimate that I gave includes all from design, starting thirty percent design to one-hundred percent design, bond council, that permit fees. We also have to submit as a designer, we have to submit to the Department of Public Health and Food Services to get approval from the state, because there's state laws that govern public pools in Montana. So that process all happens as a part of the hundred percent process. But in terms of council, it's really awarding the agreement and then making a decision on funding.
Does any of this estimate, one-point-five million, include problems that might come up? Irrigation of geological?
Yeah, so at this stage in a project, you know, we have, as engineers, we have this thing called contingency. And so you're looking kind of at the feasibility numbers, I'll pull up that for cost estimate and point out where we encounter those problems that can come up on projects. And that's down here in this contingency. It's a ten percent of the overall construction costs, not ten percent of the overall project, ten percent of construction, it's contingency factor. And so, you know, that goes down hopefully over time. And you don't ever spend that, but we build that in our projects, you know, adventure, something will just go along.
What about, when does the absolute geologic report come in?
Yeah, we have, we, once we're hired to continue to one-hundred percent design, we'll immediately have a year debt out there, pretty much.
Is it the feeling of the council that we're ready to have them bring that to one of our next meetings to approve that additional seventy percent? Because I think what I heard you say is the money is allocated within the current budget, but it does require council approval to allocate the funds, I believe.
Actually, we, we already allocated that by approving the budget.
So we don't need to do anything further for that?
No, I think we just need to start thinking about how we're going to fund it. You know, I think Brent had a really good point. I mean, we can carry along with all the engineering to get it to that point. I mean, we really aren't saddled with anything until we accept a bid to construct it, so.
And I'm concerned with the July timeframe, just looking at last year's budget cycle, that I think that we're still having conversations when there was, you know, I wondered about that June timeframe when we talked about getting it out to bid.
Yeah, I mean, my goal, and I have a personal goal in this matter, because I have young kids in this community right now. My personal goal is to get it built as soon as possible. And so if we don't award, if this community doesn't award an agreement, we miss the whole construction there. I think it's going to be, you prefer to have the whole construction there, but recognizing that you have those discussions that happen at the council level. And if I just ask that you be diligent, having them sooner rather than later, recognizing that you do have, you would have the ability to award a contract and take the project started in July, so that hopefully it will be twenty-twenty-one. Otherwise, it will be next twenty-twenty-two. That's just a danger, destruction of the pool, the pool might not.
And I would be interested in, I don't know that it necessarily has to be a pull-out demand chart, but it'd be interesting as we're looking at the resort tax right now and kind of laying out, and then to suddenly realize, oh, the ideal deadline was yesterday. You know, I'd like to avoid, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to kind of avoid that. I sense that the general feel is that the community would like it sooner rather than later. But I'm just looking at the timelines and would like to see a listing to dependencies to know if we're shooting for a realistic goal, or if it is going to be twenty-twenty-two, give them the best of service.
Yeah, and I, from our perspective, from a design, bidding perspective, and construction, we can get a design within the timeframe that we talked about by June. We can help make these, we can advertise bids, and we can, we can do that. So the rest of this really, I don't know how, you know, the rest of this may be your timeline of the council. We're talking about the funding elements on that, but I just don't believe, doesn't misunderstand yet.
No, I think, like I said, so I was looking at next, we don't have to approve because it's already approved via the budget to finish the study. Correct? So, so I hear conversations. I know at one point there was a conversation in conjunction with the school district. And although it was not part of that, is my understanding that that? is my understanding that that kind of broke down, that the, the, the school district said, said, this is, this is, I said I wasn't part of those conversations.
That's where we're back, back up and running. So when that discussion was happening, we stopped. Brent and I came to the understanding that we would stop any engineering until the school district, or whatever, at that time. At the end, I figured they could maintain it, so. Once again, Brent's best start again, and this is where we're at today.
So going back to what do you anticipate next from the council from a timeline? What do you, what do we need to do next?
I think we just, we keep in touch with Brent, keep looking for, you know, funding options. We do have some people in town that are willing to still raise some money. And they just need a commitment that we're moving forward with it, which we are, that we're gonna a hundred percent.
Yeah, one of the things that I might suggest is having maybe a small committee, folks that are trying to raise funds in the community with either staff or council to discuss, you know, some targets on fundraising, and what you want to use those, and what the public who are, are working to raise those funds want to use them for. As I mentioned, from my perspective, what I've heard, there's an endowment for operations and maintenance, money for its base pool, but the loan would ultimately be a commitment for additional items like a splash pad or a water slide, a slide. So I would suggest that between now and June, in order to continue moving those conversations along, that there be some committee with folks that volunteer and a couple council members to explore that option.
I think that's a good way to go. Just get the committee put together.
And the longer we put this off, we just add another year without a pool. So we need to make a decision. People are obviously here wanting to say yay. We don't make a decision tonight, because the decision was made when we allocated the money for the engineering, and that's gonna happen. So I think you say, awesome, go ahead and do that, and then we do. We, we have put out a, the call for bids, doesn't mean we have to award them. You know, we don't have a way to fund it, we don't have a way to fund it, but let's do what we said we were gonna do last year, which was get the engineering study done.
And I will say, sorry I didn't speak earlier, but as a parent of young children, I think there's a lot of us here tonight that would do anything to get a pool for our children, you know.
You ready to check for one point six?
But you know, the fundraising opportunities, you know, I think there are enough passionate parents and, you know, vested families in our community that we could come together as a team and make something happen.
And we have to remember that when we open this pool again, we have to stab it. So all of you who are good swimmers and capable, you'll have to step up and be lifeguards and managers and whatever. It's a, it's a joint effort with all of us right now.
Okay, thank you Brent.
Thanks.
Thank you Brent, wonderful, well done.
I would add that if we're gonna look at some resort tax, as part of that funding, that would be a little bit, it's gonna help get that in line.
Some, some of us have been saying that.
Thank you for speaking.
Okay, let's carry on, use of city land permit, Snow Creek Saloon, July twenty twenty discussion. Mary, you up on this?
Yeah, these look really good.
Okay, good.
James sent me three land use applications, two of them were last year's, but he did finally get me the correct ones. No, they looked really good. Yep, I didn't have any questions, did you have any concerns about any of them?
I did not, no, I thought they were very thorough applications, I think. Both of the applicants have gone through this process before, they've received input on the information they want, and they've kind of got their applications down, and can answer questions ahead of time.
His applications get better every year.
I had a couple of questions on, what was the second in my packet, that's the Carbon County Art Skill.
You wanna wait till we get to that?
Well, she was just addressing all three.
Oh, you want to go all three?
Are we doing them one by one, or are we doing them?
Let's do one, I was gonna do one by one. Nobody got mixed up.
I thought that's what we were doing, and then it came out later.
Which, which one are you doing first?
Snow Creek.
I didn't have any question.
Good. Any questions at the table on Snow Creek?
I noticed, just, just as, by way of comment, because they'll feed into the others, but they did ask for an exemption, and asked us to put the exemption as part of approving it, so that was good.
No.
No, no, no. Anything else?
Yeah, I, James, I have a question on number six. Portable toilets will be provided, will be placed on the west sidewalk near the alley, but do you mean the east sidewalk?
Just the Snow Creek, I'll read that again.
I mean, he's on the east side of Broadway, right? On, on number six.
Are you from the city, or is it the Chinese restaurant?
I would expect that to be a north-south reference, not an east-west reference.
The west side would be across Broadway. I think he means the east sidewalk near the alley. Unless he means the south.
This is for the Snow Creek?
I think the west side of the alley, how's that?
No. It could be the west side of the alley, that's what he's saying. On the west sidewalk, near the alleyway, but is that what he's saying? But he's really on the east side of Broadway, I just think it's confusing.
Let's just request to make sure that we're being just clear.
That he's saying west of the alley on the sidewalk, not, uh, the east, west sidewalk.
We'll have him clarify that.
Yeah, I, I know where he wants to put it, same place he put it a few years.
We'll have him clarify that. Anything else on the Snow Creek?
No, good deal.
Okay, let's move to the next one.
Which one?
Parks and the Bar to, Parks.
Parks, that one looked really good too.
Okay.
Do you have any concerns about that, James?
I did not.
Dave? I had a couple of questions, and just to be sure, we're talking about the same one. This is the Carbon County Art Skill. This is the one that has the use fee as one hundred dollars per day at three hundred dollars.
Correct.
The question that I have is they list out the days that they will have equipment up in the park, and they list Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, which by my count is four. And my assumption is, hey, since we're not doing anything on Sunday, we're not paying for that, but they will still have all the equipment up in the park. And historically, when we have, when people have come near the park, whether they're setting it up a day early or taking a day to tear down, that was also included today. So I had a question about why it was not four hundred dollars as opposed to three hundred dollars.
Would be kinder and gentler.
You know, I, I think Sunday, they usually use it for church, if I remember right.
They do like a pop lock and games?
Yeah.
One of the churches in town.
And then it comes down Monday morning.
And Monday, it comes down before noon. So that's why I guess we always done just the other, the three hundred.
Has, has it been three hundred historically in the past to your own question as well?
No, in the past, it's been like one hundred, and then the other day, we just have to end up till it came down. So, we're paying more, we're paying our, our due diligence, I guess, we're doing what we're supposed to. One thing that we can do as a council is we can readjust the, the deposit. We can't change the fee, but we can readjust the deposit. So we could make the deposit four hundred dollars and, four hundred dollars for each day. I mean, that's something that we can do.
Didn't we also pass an in-kind services where they could do some activity to help pay the hundred, or some such as well? I guess to me-
Like park cleanup after, after the jack goes down?
Will we do that?
Well, that's, that's just returning it to the state you got it in. I'm just, I'm looking at, at consistency and, 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 in fact, on the, the other application, which is Sunday, Monday, which is tear down, that's listed at two hundred. And that, that just, that seems to be inconsistent with what we've done. If somebody was setting up a day early or taking it down late, day late, those were included. And I'm just, I'm just desirous to keep things consistent, so.
So you want another hundred dollars?
Or, or if we do it with services, I just, I'm, I'm asking the question, because in my recollection, that's how we've done it.
Well, this is new, this year. Actually, you know, we haven't done it that way, because this is a new application, over last year's application. So, last year's application, we charged them a hundred dollars, and they were there for the four days. I mean, I know, because I received last year's application last week, review, thinking it was this year's application, and my suggestion was, let's lower the, the deposit, the cleanup deposit, and charge the four hundred dollars, but be, only because the council doesn't have it in our authority to lower the hundred dollar a day fee, unless they're gonna do an in-kind service. But we do have it in our authority to lower the cleanup deposit.
But, but the in-kind service is not cleaning up after yourself, it's, it's something that benefits the city.
Okay, so we need something, because I'm not-
ID for the staff.
Tree trimming, a big one that's been a lot of work, and that's slowly been chipped away, is baiting Most Trails Park. So, there's always volunteer opportunities in the parks, particularly at that Lions Park, especially these days because our parks budget is so tiny right now. So the, the in-kind goods or services was basically a way for us to try and get some improvements in the parks.
Um, I would have to talk to the board, you know, find out what, if you agree with what you do.
I like Mary's idea too, I think that-
I mean, that is something that is within our-
Right.
So it's just keeping part of the deposit for the extra day?
Yeah. Just changing that, because, because the rules state that we can, we can lower the deposit, or we can make it greater, the cleanup deposit, but it doesn't state that we can do that with the use fee. The only way we can lower the use fee is with in-kind services.
To me, the idea of a deposit is you're giving it back or not giving it back. I'm much more comfortable with the, with the in-kind services than-
Doesn't matter, because we just, if they gave us four hundred dollars for a deposit, we would only give the four hundred dollars back. We wouldn't give them the extra hundred dollars, because we put that out for their use.
So, we wanna move this, we wanna move this forward, that's the one big question that we have. Kim can go back to Earth War with this question, and then what's your other question?
The second question is, I noticed that this had the alcohol fee of a hundred per day, but there was no request for an open, or, excuse me, a hundred dollar for the event, sorry, didn't mean to cuss that. No, 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 but there was no request for an open container exemption. And so is there a reason we don't have requests?
Alcohol's allowed in parks.
Is that, so that's the reason we don't have, that was my question.
Yeah, and that was, that's, that was the same as last year's application.
Okay, so we're moving forward, we're just, we're taking that.
So if I understood Councilman Cameron's proposal, we'll take the same eight hundred dollars, but what we'll do is, we'll charge you a four hundred dollars for the use fees, and only require a four hundred deposit, which we give back at the end.
And they'll have to amend their, their application.
Yeah, and then, and then basically-
Unless they decide to do in-kind services.
It's your preference, so you decide if you'd rather do a hundred in-kind services, or if you pay the four hundred because you're using four days, but in return, the city will lower the deposit to four hundred. And I'm okay with whatever the preference is, whatever works for you.
Okay, we'll move that forward. Uh, the last one's a Labor Day offer.
Looked good to me, how about you, James?
I thought this one was even easier.
Yes, it was.
Anything at the table, Dave?
Number ten, so it's a request to have combed off areas. That's something we need to coordinate with public works, I believe, or, and are you okay with the ask?
Anything else at the table? Carry it forward to council.
Yep.
All right. Capital Improvement Plan discussion, James, you wanna start us out on that?
Sure. We've got, we didn't all get paper copies, but hopefully you were all able to see the electronic copy. There were quite a few changes since the last time you saw it. A lot of the changes had to do with Parks Board, and I apologize for the fact that there were a few things from the Parks Board, the Parks area that were not fixed, and there were no major additions, they were mostly rearranging up a few bullet points. And a couple words were misspelled, there was a year that was done wrong. For example, it says field park, not field school, refers to a twenty seventeen plan when it was done in twenty eighteen. Brewer Hill instead of brewery hill. So those are the type of issues left in there. I emailed, I think, three different times, changes in parks, but apparently I didn't email those-
This would be an email? What's, what's the date on that? This is ringing a bell when I'm looking.
Uh, emailing to the contractor. I emailed those changes.
You started out by saying we didn't have a paper copy, but we had an electronic copy. Where is it, where is it?
I was under the email.
When I emailed everybody.
I'm just on the city website, on the document.
I included it. Yeah, you email them.
It is on the, it was added to the public works page on the city's website as well.
I missed it in the, it was, so it was just the electronic version of this packet.
And I think you're gonna get together with contractors next week to prioritize.
About doing a, doing a priorit- prioritization.
That one.
Priority matrix, so page thirty of the CIP lists all the different capital improvement projects. That goes on to page thirty-one, those have not been right yet. Jim and I will meet with the contractor, besides putting those minor changes on the parks, the priority matrix is the only thing that needs to be done. And then the public hearing for it is being advertised in the paper Thursday, over in the paper this Thursday, the following Thursday, and we will hold a public hearing at our action meeting in February, and hopefully approve it.
Questions at the table?
What, what did you say the date's gonna be for the public hearing?
February eleventh.
Do we put a definition of the capital improvements in the, in the capital improvement plan?
It is in there, yes.
Okay, I couldn't follow that.
I believe it's five thousand, five years, ten thousand dollars. And I know that the, the timeframe, I've heard different numbers, five years or ten years. They have five years in there, I asked Great West if they knew where that number came from, they weren't sure.
There's a couple of different, yeah, there's, it's like, in multiple places in Montana code annotated, some say five years, some say ten years. And Bozeman's is one year. So it can really be defined by-
The five-year part, James, I maybe probably got you that they had the CIP, the two thousand eight. And so we started with that one, which we did over the five-year, and set it at a five-year deal. And it just keeps this, this is basically a living document, we have to move, we change things. What we come up with and we vote on today, two months down the road, something else might come up that we need to do something a little different, or there's funding available for something that's not as high on the list, and we can move them around. I mean, we took, we took the nine million dollars for the project, two million, a two million dollar project, over a matter of a couple weeks and changed the whole CIP last night. I mean, this is a roadmap, it's not a, a absolute, you know, here's what you're gonna do, here's how you're gonna do it, it's a roadmap, given this idea of the capital improvement program, projects, what we wanna do, and it, I mean, we need to get it passed and get it, you know, all of the things, I think we've come to a deal where everything's in there that we have in our list today, but that doesn't mean that it can't change, because I know it will.
And part of the changes, and I think this has been brought up at meetings before sometimes, priority one may not get done, priority five does, and it really just comes down to the funding source. If we get a grant, we might be able to do one that's not in the top three, but maybe we can get one down lower on the list. Depending on the water sewer type of project, we may have funding for that, for certain projects that we don't run. So it's, it's a guide for us to try and improve our capital projects, but it is not something we have to one hundred percent. So, it's, it's a guide for us to try and improve our capital projects, but it is not something we have, have to one hundred percent do in any type of order.
Dave?
Is this a standalone action item in a vacuum, or does it have any dependencies to some of the other things that, as far as like budget or resort tax or the-
This is, this is the CIP.
And, and having not looked at that, not thought that that was part of the email, is the pool currently listed in that CIP?
It is, yes. With the option B, which is what was presented tonight.
Any other discussion at the table? Discussion at the audience? Okay, move that forward. Dave, resolution three-five-three-five, restricted account.
All right, so this is, uh, the promised update to what was presented last time. There was some question and discussion. Um, it was a, kind of a multifaceted resolution. Um, the first was that we needed to set up a restricted account. And then the second one was what to do with that, and so we bifurcated that. I got together with the judge and we basically stripped down significantly, we kept the ones that had to do with setting up the restricted account. Um, so that is what this does. The one thing I have not done, um, that I would, that I apologize for not getting done now, I had sent a copy to, um, Lonnie via CC, but I haven't sat down and confirmed with her that this does meet the needs as far as setting up the, the fund, um, from your perspective. Um, and then it was forwarded to the city attorney and to Lori as well, I did not hear any direct feedback from either of you, but-
You said respond if I had any changes, I didn't.
Yeah, so, 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 so you're good?
The only thing I would change is to make the code section cited correctly, their, the way you got them cited is not exactly correct.
Meaning, like, get rid of the space between the-
Well, and like you've got it in two thousand nineteen and stuff, so I'm just going to clean up your code section site. And send that back to you, that was the only issue.
So, this was as I understood what the intention of council was, I'd like to give a thumbs up, in which case we can move forward.
I'll take comments from the table on this.
I'd like to add one more, um, under therefore, that the city council will authorize the city clerk pursuant to Montana code annotated seven dash five dash four-two-oh-three-two, um, to delay the effective date of the resolution to be July first of twenty twenty. Um, the reason that I'd like to do that is because it eliminates the need for, um, budget amendments concerning this, and it gives us time to get the inter-local agreement, um, approved, and also to discuss whether or not we have an applied contract with DSVS. It seems to me that part of the driving force behind this was to take the four thousand dollars for, uh, DS, no, for the county's victim advocacy program out of the police budget and take these funds that, these pass-through funds that we have historically passed on to DSVS. And while we don't have a written contract with DSVS, we do have an implied contract. We do get a service and a benefit from them that legally we should pay for. And I think that that's a discussion that needs to happen at the, at the deals.
More discussion at the table.
This is way out of my wheelhouse, but in discussions with the judge, I, I get that this is just preference. He would choose, he would rather use the gal at the county than DSVS, and I feel like if we get in between that, getting into that micromanaging again, which we're trying to stay away from.
I don't know that DSVS and the victim advocate for the, the county's program, that, they don't duplicate services. And DSVS provides a valuable service and a different service than that program. I listened to the judge too, and I heard we could save this four thousand dollars and spend it someplace else. Well, if we're saving it, we're not spending it someplace else. And if we're spending it someplace else, we're not saving it, and what for four thousand dollars is a better value to the people that are victims of domestic violence in Red Lodge? This is one of the very few things that actually affects, you know, the benefit to the people that live in Red Lodge.
So, on the driving force on this, um, it was, the meeting staff was looking at trying to see where we can go with the general funds, and the judge had brought this forward, and those funds, um, don't go into the general fund, but the payment that goes to the county does, comes out of general fund. So it was just a looking at ways to help the, the general fund. It was not trying to take money away from the, the DSVS, it was just, uh, trying to help the general. There was no driving force to try to go away from DSVS, so I just-
So, I, you know, I guess the main thing is, uh, Mary brought up that she wanted, uh, another therefore on there, and do you all want that on there?
Well, I, I would have a question before making that decision, so I, I heard the judge stand in front of us last week and say, or, or at our last meeting and state that he didn't have a preference per se, that the driver was a way to, 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 basically, if there's a four thousand dollar contract that we have that's currently in the budget, I'll come back to that in a second, that if we could use existing monies that were going to DSVS to pay for that, that that in turn would allow that four thousand dollars to be spent elsewhere within the, the, the general budget. I think that I'm, what I'm hearing and I'm, I'm in agreement with is that Councilman Cameron is saying, our current budget allocates four thousand dollars for the county in the existing police budget. Our current budget that we passed did contain a comment, and there's some discussion about whether that was binding, binding or meaningful, but it did include the comment that was passed through for DSVS. And I think it's a fair statement to say that was the presumption of council when we passed the budget, that that was our intention. So I'm inclined to say that for the existing budget year that we are currently in, that the four thousand dollars to the county goes out of the police budget as budgeted, and that the DSVS pass-through goes to DSVS as we understood we were budgeting. I do think there's a worthwhile conversation as we move into next year's budget about whether we want to do that differently.
Absolutely.
But if, if we work from the assumption that those things are there, I don't know that I understand the need for the third where for, because this is completely vendor agnostic, that was one of our goals was to eliminate it, so.
If we pass this resolution without, without delaying the date, it is effective immediately, the next business day. And then that's going to require budget amendments.
Would it if we didn't change how the money was spent, or what, what is it that would require the budget amendment?
I think, no, I don't know, I, not if, not if we're not going to change it.
I, I, I would think that if we have to do it, I would have no objection to doing it, but if we're not going to change the way that money is currently allocated, is it your understanding it would still be needed?
It is. That's my understanding, that this simplifies it, this, this says, we're going to start this with the new budgeting year, and we're going to pass through the, the payments as they are now on to DSVS. DSVS still has not been, received any of those pass-through funds for this budgeting year, and we're, what, seven months in?
I, I have zero problem with including if that's needed, I, I've not looked at that, I've not heard of that angle. What I'd like to do is take the next two weeks to determine, and I, I, I see three kind of stakeholders, I'd like to get Mary's input, I'd like to get Lonnie's input, and then, if, if, if we can all agree whether it needs to be there or not, are we good moving forward with this, with the collective? So if we, if we determine that it's necessary, I'm absolutely in support of that.
So, when do we determine that it's necessary, next time we get together?
We're going to do homework between now and then.
Okay, well, I've done my homework, and I'll give you the, um, Montana code annotated that makes that possible.
Damn, yes.
Okay, seven dash five.
No, 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 I, I, we'll, I'll do it afterwards. I do, good. So I will, I will work with this and amend it as necessary with the, with the concerns that Councilman Cameron has related.
That works for me.
Moving forward with whatever you come up with, with your additions. Good? Inter-local agreement, victim advocate services.
So we've kind of already had a little bit of that discussion.
Yeah.
And, and-
Part of the same thing.
Yeah, are, are we as a council on the same page that for the current budget year, the four thousand for the county comes out of police, and the intent is that the pass-through is going to DSVS, or is that not a common consensus?
It's a common consensus down here.
Well, without a budget amendment, that's what it is.
So, 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 I think what I'm hearing is that during the budget process, the conversation can come up whether we want to do that differently for next year.
Yes.
But for this year, four thousand for the county is coming out of police, and the rest is, should be passed on to DSVS.
No, those are different funds. The, the four thousand dollars from the general fund is in the police budget for the county's program. The pass-through funds are separate, Dave, they're not the same, so we don't say the rest goes here.
So, so the pass-through funds are to DSVS, I apologize if my words are not correct.
Correct.
So that is what I'm hearing.
And that really doesn't have anything to do with this inter-local agreement, because that's just four thousand dollars, and it doesn't matter to the county if it comes out of the general fund, or it comes out of the pass-through funds, or whatever it comes out of.
Rebecca, you want to fill us in where we're at with that agreement?
We're nowhere.
We've kicked over.
The inter-local agreement, I think it's already been pulled off the county's, um, meeting agenda. Alex and I, I think I said this last meeting, had talked, and the wording of the inter-local, he and I both agreed that it can continue to go forward because it's based on grant money, which is Tessa's main, um, source of revenue for her job. And so I haven't heard another word from Alex about it, since he and I agreed on it, I'm assuming the county commissioners took it off because it was on the agenda and it's no longer.
Yeah, they, they passed it. They, they approved it last week out there, when it was on the agenda.
Well, nobody's bothered to send it to me, so it's too high J.
But, but again, our existing budget-
We'll, we'll talk to them on Thursday.
Our existing budget already specifies how that four thousand dollars out of the police fund is to be spent, and how the pass-through for DSVS is to be spent. Right. Lonnie, do you need anything from us? And then Mayor, we'll look forward to having the conversation if we want to change that in the future.
Right. Okay, public comment period.
Come to the opening of the DSVS show, that's going to be at the RT on February seventh.
February seventh?
It's called What Were You Wearing? It's an installation.
Thank you.
Five to seven.
Uh, any reports to the table from, uh, the department heads they're assigned to? Does anybody, anything to offer, or the boards, like the library board, what are they working on?
He said they're on your anniversary last weekend.
Anything else?
I sent you the information from the fire oversight.
Yeah, thank you, we haven't had one of those in a while.
Did you want, you, you want me to start sending that to everybody, or is that? I think it might be.
That would be a bad idea. Or, you know, if you want to send it to me and say, pass it along to a council, I'd be more than happy to do it on my side.
Is there anything you want to share from a high level that we should know about?
They got a new ambulance, and last couple of months ago, they got a new fire truck, so. And they just wrote a check for it, because they don't even have to take them home. They save their money until they have enough, and then they buy pieces of equipment. Kind of cool.
Gravy, anything for parks?
You know, I didn't make it to the last meeting.
All right, we're kind of at a dead end. Should we call it?
Yes.
We're calling it. Thank you, everybody.